Action items, number one, approval of board policy 3220, student expression in school-sponsored media. This came before CNI August 21st for...
Came for, hang on, hold that thought, for consideration. No, yes, consideration.
I might add that this item has been updated since introduction. May I have the motion, please, kind sir?
I move that the school board approve policy number 3220, student expression in school-sponsored media as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Dr. Kenosha, could you briefly talk to this as well as the update?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I did give, you know, synopsis of what this particular policy was about. I just wanted to take note of, in regard to the question regards to appeal, General Counsel Tree did add some language on page two of two noting that the decision could be appealed based on the RCW that pertains to appeals of decisions by school officials and school boards.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? We had a rich and robust and a little bit rowdy discussion during intro. Director Mack.
I just want to say thank you for being responsive to the clarification in the policy. I think that that, you know, addresses the concerns that I had, that it just creates clarity in the policy, and I appreciate doing that.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke.
I was just wondering if we could hear, if there's any feedback available on the point that was raised in public testimony around advertising, specifically around potential advertising for marijuana.
And we did this as well during intro, and please do so again, kind sir.
Yes. Good evening, Noel Tree, General Counsel. Yes, after that issue was raised at intro, I went back and talked with staff that have worked on the advertising policy in the past, and there's been a recognized need to update that policy to better address student publications, so that's some work that will be coming to you. With that said, I think we, as a district, would be, even with the adoption of this policy, within our rights to still continue to prohibit, as we have done, advertising regarding tobacco, alcohol, or marijuana in student publications, and I don't think that changes with the adoption of this policy. It does raise some other questions, though, and so that's why I think we need to get to the advertising policy itself and probably do some revisions there. The other thing I'd point out about this policy, just to be clear, we're not adopting anything that's not already in state law. We're pretty much just reiterating the statute that was adopted by the legislature. That statute says we have to adopt a policy reflecting the statute, so that's part of why we're doing what we're doing.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please. Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number two, approval of amending board policy 3116, students in out-of-home foster care. This came before CNI August 21st for...
Also for consideration.
Please make the motion, kind sir.
I move that the school board amend policy number 3116, students in out-of-home foster care as attached to the board action report.
Motion. Comments, questions, and concerns? I have one for Chief Jesse, if I might. We had a good conversation during intro. We asked about numbers and how we send those numbers out to the larger world to emphasize our needs.
And so, we're still working on that request at the holiday weekend and the start of school, just backs us up just, just a little bit. I want to make sure kids are getting their safe. We had an excellent start, by the way, I just want to say, especially students' support services, so. But we'll get those numbers to you as we talked about identification of students and specifically the breakdown, as we were talking about the differences between literally students who are homeless and then also the difference between those students who are in foster care, and so what are, that was the request, and so we'll get you that data. I'm going to try my best by next week.
Outstanding. Director Pinkham, did you have question, comment, concern, sir?
Yeah, a question, just, yeah, and sorry that I wasn't here when this was introduced, but I appreciate the, definitely the change of language in here because we do have a lot of children that may not be in the foster care system but may be being watched after by aunts, uncles, grandparents, and they may have that shifting of home from one to the next, so I think with this, we pick up those students as well so that they can be acknowledged, hey, even though you're not in the foster care system, you don't have a permanent home sometimes, and we need to address those needs.
Please.
I just had one today. I was school visiting, and we were working on that situation. I was right there, just helping a family because he didn't show up in the registry, so we were helping it because their family situation just changed. That happens.
Been there, done that. Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please. Thank you.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three, amending policy number 2413, equivalency credit for career and technical education courses. Came before CNI August 21st for...
For approval.
Motion, please, kind sir.
I move that the school board amend policy number 2413, equivalency credit for career and technical education courses.
I second the motion.
And it's my understanding that this was a legislative mandate. Is that correct?
That is correct, but I did notice in the bill that it was done at the request of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
And in two sentences, what are we voting on for the viewing public?
Thank you. What we're voting on is the removal of the requirement that, in order to give credit for AP computer science, remove the requirement that you either have to take concurrently Algebra II or have passed that course.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number four, amending policy number 3244, prohibition of corporal punishment. This came before OPS, August 22nd, for...
For approval.
Could you read the motion, please, kind sir?
I move that the school board amend policy number 3244, prohibition of corporal punishment as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Chief Jesse, can you come up and give us three sentences? Again, we had a good discussion during introduction, all of which can be found on YouTube.
Absolutely. So again, our conversation was just to simply say this is doing a clerical update to this particular policy, 3244, also to be in alignment with 3246, which is around restraint, isolation, and other uses of physical intervention. We no longer have aversive therapy plans, so that's one, that's the reason why this particular policy was updated to reflect the more detailed policy of 3246.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, now we're going back to the consent agenda. Item number three, Bex 4, Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project Phase Two, constructability, review, report, and implementation. This came before OPS, August 22nd, for...
Approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the school board accept and approve the constructability review report dated August 8th, 2018 by LRC Consultants Incorporated for the Wing Luke Elementary School Phase Two project.
I second the motion.
Associate Superintendent, Dr. Herndon, did you hear the public comment earlier this evening?
Yes.
Can you reference that in your succinct information for this bar?
Yes, I believe I did. Same comment from the last board meeting, and I believe I sent a response to that to the entire board last week. So basically, it was the nomenclature for constructability and implementation. Constructability meaning the review talks about, is this an efficient use? Can it be constructed? That's the constructability portion. Implementation refers to the schedule of the construction project.
And I appreciate receiving that email, and I wonder, Mr. General Counsel, whether or not, when we get emails that further clarify bars that are on our agenda, whether those could or should be transparently attached, or how do we handle that so that we do our transparency and the public has the same information as we do? It's a systemic question.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Why don't we spend some time looking at that, and then we can talk with you about a recommendation on how we might handle that going forward.
Okay. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack.
This may seem a little pedantic, but I'm wondering if the title is what's been throwing things off because this, the actual motion is accepting the report, and the last word in the title, the last two words in the title says "and implementation," but that's not really what it's related to. So would it create clarity if we struck that title, those two words on the title?
I believe that implementation, actually, if you look in the executive summary, it, there is a sentence in there that talks about the outlined schedule for the construction project to happen. So that's what the report does. It's both, it's both segments. It is the constructability, which is, again, the actual construction, and the implementation is just the schedule for the construction project. We have that for every capital project that we move forward.
Thank you. Director Pinkham, comment, question, concern, sir?
Do we know generally how long it takes the city, or whoever the Landmark Board is, to respond, and how much, if we held up and said, well, let's see what they're going to say, that would impact this project?
Landmarks does not consider a landmark application after a demolition permit has been issued, which has already happened. So there will be no landmark consideration for this.
Director Geary? Go ahead, Director Pinkham.
And, you know, just, my concern has been about this project is that it seems like we just, again, put some lovely funds toward this in 2006, and now we're tearing something down to build up again, so hopefully we'll be a little more frugal with our money after, look, oh, what do we need to build, and what's, I know we're growing fast, but it seems like when we build something not too long ago that we're bringing it back down, it's a shame.
Director Geary.
Could you give a brief statement in terms of current projects? What process you use to sort of do long-term envisioning in light of our known capacity Do we, in other words, do, are we looking at how potentially our projects can be added on to or modified over time?
Somewhat, yes. That's, I believe that's the intent of the Long Range Facility Master Plan, is really take a look at all of the assets that we have, try and figure out where the growth is happening. Again, on top of the capacity issues, we just have building condition issues, and we really have to tackle both. So that's the intent of the Long Range Facility Master Plan. It looks out, you know, it's basically a, it's a 20-year look. Looking at capacity issues going beyond kind of the projections of five years or so gets definitely a little bit more murky, but the advantage of something like a facility condition assessment, which is what we're having done right now, is that it gives you building condition, that's not really going to change, so that's going to remain the same. The buildings will continue to kind of fall apart at different rates of speed depending on our budget for maintenance, but other than that, the capacity issues are really just projections about enrollment and what we're trying to do, and I think a lot of that work's being handled by the work that we're doing with the city to try and work hand-in-hand and get development information from them and population information.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Burke. Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Me.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of six to one.
Number nine, from the Consent Calendar, Bex 4, final acceptance of Public Works Contract P5046 with Forma Construction Company for the new Thornton Creek Building Project. This came before OPS, August 22nd, for...
Approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the school board accept the work performed under contract P5046 with Forma Construction Company for the new Thornton Creek Building Project as final.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham.
Yeah, again, I go back to public testimony earlier about two points about the Thornton Creek last connection World War II history site. So has demolition been already put in for the Decatur Building for this one as well?
We have not. However, we did have a conversation with Landmarks Board. They did not believe that this building would probably be landmarked, and the building's in pretty bad condition, so during the process of constructing the new Thornton Creek Building, that was some of the public comment during that time, was to make sure that we demolished that particular building, but we're current, we haven't started demolition on that particular building yet.
Director Mack.
For my own clarification and for the public's clarification, this annex building is adjacent to the Decatur Elementary School Building, correct?
Correct.
Right, and it's in really poor condition, moldy, not really good at learning environment for students.
Correct.
And students are not currently using that building.
I do not believe so.
And, and the school that is now Decatur, which is directly adjacent to Thornton Creek because there's two schools on what was one site previously known as Decatur, we have that in a lot of places, confusion over building names and building sites, but the, the Decatur School is the original school site minus the annex, and the annex not being used because it is in such poor condition, and it's been planned from the beginning of the project to be demolished.
That's correct.
I have a question, if I might. Is there a way to honor the history at Decatur? Murals, plaques, in some fashion, recognize our history because history's a terrible thing to lose?
Yes, I have an answer for you on that. This project was subject to a CEPA appeal, and one of the things that came out of that hearing, we had the hearing examiner recommend that we put up some kind of historic site marker or reader board, and Capital is looking at doing that as part of the construction project, so there will be something on site that talks about the history of that site.
And can we make it something big and bold and yummy as opposed to some little plaque in tiny little letters affixed in a back hallway?
We will certainly do the best that we can.
Thank you. Director Pinkham.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Director Harris, I was, what a suggestion I was going to bring up, if, you know, the condition of the building, if there's mold and stuff in there, you know, to try to save it, but again, to acknowledge the history of the site, and if we proceed with that, let's watch what words we use, because when I read history about this site, they talk about the hostile Indians that were attacking that site. So as we proceed with, and let's watch the language that we use.
Seeing no further comments, questions, or concerns from my colleagues? Roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
We are now on D, intro items. Number one, approval of the 2018-19 Superintendent Evaluation Goals and Instrument in Adoption of Board Procedure, 1630 BP for Board Procedure. This came before EXAC, August 27th, for approval. Approval of this item would accept the 2018-19 Superintendent Goals and Evaluation Instrument and adopt Board Procedure Number 1630 BP, Evaluation of the Superintendent as attached to the board action report. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Rich, thoughtful discussion both in executive and in intro. Speaks for itself. Number two, annual approval of schools per Washington Administrative Code 180-16-220. This came before CNI, August 21st, for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would approve each school within the district as having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on school learning, and includes a continuous improvement process pursuant to Washington Administrative Code Chief Storowski, front and center, please.
Yes. Mike Storowski, Chief of Schools. I'm bringing before you our annual approval that our schools have began, actually, our school leaders in January of 2018 for our continuous school improvement plans. Our school leaders have engaged with each other in a peer-to-peer review process that we have put in process the last two years, and so principals and schools are giving peer-to-peer reviews on the continuous school improvement plans. We do this so that people, number one, are deprivatizing what it is that they're doing, and also to learn from one another. In addition to the peer-to-peer reviews that happened in April and May of this year, we also had our principal learning networks, which our EDSs lead with our principals, to do further reviews and input. These are brought by their BLTs, BLTs approve these, and they're brought back to their school communities, and one of the things that we're really proud of under Director Burke's direction and also cosponsorship and leadership with Director Harris is really making these living, breathing documents and not just compliance-driven, and so when I heard directors going to schools today, which I love, and I want you to continue to do that, is if you don't read the schools, school improvement plan, what you can do is you should be able to ask the principal and ask their staff members, what are your focus goals this year? And one of the things that we've done as an improvement this year is that we've included the Forma for Success Key Performance Indicators are now into our, our CSIPS this year. Our data dashboard with dots and technology and REA, our research and evaluation and assessment, is now aligning to that we're getting actual clear, quick, updated information and data for schools to be able to build their CSIPS on, and those of you who attended our SLI in June with our school leaders got to see that in action where we had people looking at data and being able to see in our atlas and our data warehouse for schools to be able to see how an actual SMART goal was created into specific subgroups. And so I think our, our CSIP process is a robust one. There's not anyone in our state that's doing what it is that we're doing. I can guarantee you that. With the amount of detail and transparency in these documents, and also making them just not being a compliance document that just not an executive director of schools looks at, but anyone that's going into our schools and is providing support to our schools is using the CSIP to, number one, see what types of supports do they need to be able to achieve these SMART goals? That our professional development system is now becoming aligned, and I think Dr. Kenosha would agree with that. It's been a pain point for us because in the past, our CSIPS were developed after staffing had happened, after budget had happened, and we were just catching up as a system to try to figure out what were schools doing and trying to provide professional development to support what schools are wanting to do. And so now we're starting to not only align what we're trying to do for our schools and our schools being very clear about what their focuses, focus areas are, but we have central office supports to be able to help them do that. So one of the things I also wanted to mention was that in addition to all of our executive directors of schools reading these and looking at these, they've been also incorporated this year that the ESSA schools, every Students to See Act was also incorporated. We just took that, which was in years past, would have been a huge lift for our system, we just took those and put those requirements directly into CSIPS. Our MTSS teams and our leads, Director Geary was out and seeing our MTSS, our promised schools, and seeing that in action as well, and people consistently saying, there's the Forma for Success, our superintendent SMART goals, and also your CSIP goals, and your CSIP goals should be directing what your focus priorities are in your schools. And so with that being said, we have 102 CSIPS that are on time, updated, and have been on public view for over six weeks now. On June 15th, we had 85% of all of our CSIPS turned in. July 1, we had 90% of those turned in, and by August 1, we had 100% of all of our CSIPS turned in, of which we're very proud.
Director Mack, please.
I am very appreciative of the additional attachments to the bar, especially the detail of the CSIP guidebook, I guess? I'm not sure what it's titled, but it's...
It's a manual.
The manual, yes. It's, you know, it's really great to see that in depth and that that's a really great tool for schools and educators at our schools and even parents that can access that and see it, so I think there's some just really great thorough work around the CSIP, so gratitude there. I also want to extend my gratitude for the clarity around listing the school names and their OSPI school code number, as well as their address and what level they are. That basic information, I think, is really helpful to create fidelity across all of our systems because we have these lists of schools, and we are technically approving each school. That's what we're doing here as a board. Our schools also show, that list shows up in our budget, it shows up in our facilities master plan, it shows up in all these other places, and so having a very clear list of these are our schools and where they are this year, and their proper name creates a, a record of fidelity that is, you know, I'm really appreciative of. So thank you for adding that one in. My question still comes from some of the confusion that happens with some of our buildings and schools that have moved, and I have, there's a couple examples that come to mind. One is Van Al Salt and Old Van Al Salt.
Original.
Original Van Al Salt, and the Rox Hill and E.C. Hughes. So Rox Hill is the elementary school moved into the E.C. Hughes building. We had a wonderful opening yesterday. But my question is around what happens to the original building, Rox Hill? Does it get a different OSPI code number if we're continuing to operate it as a school in the sense it has programs within it? Van Al Salt and original Van Al Salt is another example of that where I think we have programs within the building, maybe SPP programs, and we're operating it as a school, but it's not... So I'm curious to know whether or not those buildings that are operating with, with programs in them actually become schools and in what situations they do and when they don't.
Well, I would say, just on, for my definition of what we're using for the purposes of the CSIPS and the approval process, is that we have 102 sites, 102 principals, and that's what we're... what we're approving here. The question that you're asking Director Mack around programs and facilities are beyond the scope of what this is asking for us to do. And I, and for us right now, I don't have the answers to that question.
I appreciate that, but I do think it's helpful that we have these school codes and the names, and then that helps, will help feed back to the facilities' master plan and, you know, as we move forward, creating more clarity, so thank you.
Director Burke.
I will, I will go on record as a fan of this work and definitely please share my gratitude for how far we've come. So I just want to share a compare and contrast story around the conversation that we could have been having or probably were having three years ago. In, as a, as a director, you know, we could spend a lot of time reading everyone, we could, we could go with the complete trust, or we could do a spot audit, and I typically do a spot audit. And what I had found my first year on the board that kind of got me riled up was you could look in a CSIP and there would be things, there'd be content that was clearly from prior year or before. There was content that would say things like, we, you know, in terms of how a school operates and what is its, you know, what is its methodology to get students to grade level or to, you know, to get them to a certain, to, essentially to achievement. We apply the district's curriculum and use differentiated instruction strategies. So things like that would be in there, along with sometimes sentences that just stop. And it was a little bit disheartening to think, well, this is not something that really has value, but clearly people, you know, we have to go through the process. And so there's a, there's sort of a decision point of, well, okay, do we just minimize it and accept that it's a compliance document? And then when I looked through the collective bargaining agreement, and I think it occurred like 19 times or something in the CBA, it made me realize, well, this is a compliance document, but it is so much more. And so I'm really grateful for how that has, has sort of taken traction. And when you, when you look through them now, you find things about, rather than just X percent of third graders are meeting standard in reading. You see disaggregated data by African-Americans. You see disaggregated data by special ed. When you look at instructional strategies, you find things that say tier-one strategies, boom, 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 boom. Tier-two, boom, boom, boom. Very concrete, very explicit, and not just we use the district's adoption. It actually reads like people stating what they actually do. Instead of feeling like if they put out in the public, if they put into the wild that they might be doing something outside the box, that they'll get their hand slapped. Now, it seems like people are actually being candid, truthful about the resources and tools that they're using to support their kids. And I think that's brilliant because that really helps us consolidate and find the ones that are, you know, that are at our outlier schools, that are high-performing, innovative, and find ways to leverage them. So again, a fan, thank you. Kudos.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Last, but certainly not least, on this particular topic. I can remember, and I believe that Director Patu can recall, when board directors, when they were faced with criticism, some from this person standing at that podium and probably far too acerbic and cynical, said, "It doesn't matter what's in the CSIP. All that matters is that we do them. No qualitative measure, no accountability measure." And I spent two days of my life back in the day, looking at every one of them and putting together a spreadsheet. And if you knew me better, you'd know that spreadsheets are not my forte, unlike Director Burke. I can remember reading extremely hostile criticism on a regular and continuing basis from respected critics that we were not meeting our mission. "We" meaning the big team, the SPS team. So today, when I'm at West Seattle Elementary and at Chief South International High School, I heard the CSIP mentioned no fewer than 10 times. We have come a very long way, and I will admit that I have voted no from this dais for the CSIPS. And it is my extraordinary pleasure to vote yes tonight. Thank you all very much. This is a big darn lift. Well, okay, we're not voting tonight, but if we were voting tonight, I would vote for it. I am predisposed. There you go.
All right, I'll be, we'll be good.
Unless something really bad happens in the next two weeks.
We'll be good, we'll be good.
That's right, under the wire.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, y'all. Number three, and last, and I believe I win a bet, gentlemen, on the $2 million wall. Revised Board Policy Number 2151, Interscholastic Activities. This came before OPS, August 22nd, for consideration. Approval of this item would amend Board Policy 2151, Interscholastic Activities, to confirm that Seattle Public Schools is a member of the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, also known as WIAA, and that its schools are members of the Metro Athletic League, also known as Metro League. A second purpose for the policy update is to confirm board approval of any new or reopened comprehensive district high schools will be members of the Metro League. Dr. Hernan, take it away.
Yes, you are seeing this policy, and the reason why this policy is coming to you is that there was a document presented to, I believe, the superintendent and board president to be signed on behalf of the district to the WIA stating membership in the WIA. When legal then reviewed that document, cross-referenced it with our policies, they did discover that previously this policy, 2151, had the language in there that talked about membership. Over time, however, some of that language in a previous revision was taken out. I don't think it was the intent to say, we no longer want to be a member of the WIA, but presenting a document for you to sign on behalf of the rest of the district without having that clear policy guidance in here was something that we just wanted to make sure that language is, was in here. In addition, during Operations Committee, we did talk about there is a difference between the WIAA student athletic eligibility and what Seattle Public Schools has as an eligibility piece as well. And Director Harris pointed that piece out. So part of what we have in the superintendent procedures is that ability to waive that difference so that students then would meet the minimum requirements for WIAA participation.
Director Gary, please.
Well, I understand that this policy is coming before us as a matter of cleanup. When I read it, it brings up an issue for me in that it states, "The board recognizes the value of a program of interscholastic athletic activities as an integral part of the total school experience to all students of the district and to the community." And yet I don't think that we act in a way that recognizes that, in that we are not providing funds towards our unified program and towards athletic activities that support our children, our students with disabilities. As a matter of Title IX, we do that for our female students, and that is something that the WIAA recognizes. And it is my understanding that the WIA rules and regulations do not recognize the unified program, but I don't think we are bound as a board to recognize or to limit what we value by the WIA rules. And so there's something that rings very false about this in terms of our actions. And is it that we as a district are violating this policy, or we as a board are not guaranteeing that our budget provides for this important work? And that needs to change, in my opinion, and I won't vote for another budget that doesn't recognize that as an integral value for all of our students. I do also note that the bar, just quickly, over the equity analysis, says, says that the tool is not applied, and it's because, again, this is legal requirements with regard to our membership for the WIAA, as if the WIAA is going to drive what we as a district are going to do around equity. And I find that to be unacceptable. And so I hope we will change that as well because I, while it says a racial equity analysis tool is not applied, I believe an equity analysis should be applied, and that's what it says, and that we should also be looking at this issue under our student benefit. Because we do recognize that our students, our students with disabilities do benefit by participating in athletics through the unified program. It's something that we try to support, but we put that upon our families, and I don't believe it should be looked at as simply a club sport. It needs to, we need to, take responsibility for that as the athletic opportunity that is appropriate for our students with disabilities, for all of our students to participate in because all of our students can. And we need to also recognize that even students without disabilities, it is sometimes their only opportunity to play in some of our sports because of the competitiveness of some of the sports that we offer. So I throw that out. I know that's not the drive behind this policy that's coming before us, but it's something that we as a district really need to come to, we need to face and fix, so.
Director Mack.
There are two things, tagging on to Director Gary's point here. This specifically calls out two leagues or associations that we're belonging to, but I don't, do we, do we actually put into policy association with Unified or any of the other potential leagues? Or it's just, these are just the only two that the district formally recognizes in policy?
As far as I know, the WIA is the statewide, and the Metro League is our specific league that we're a member to, and we're not, as far as I know, a member of any other league.
But Unified is another league, or it's not a same, the similar kind of thing? Okay. Just clarifying what we're talking about here, then. So moving on to my other question, then, is the, part of the reason why we put this up for consideration was the, just to touch on the issue around the grade point average and the, I believe it's, there's some conflict between our existing policy and the WIAA. Can you explain that a little bit as to what the conflict is and whether or not we are resolving it here, or whether or not we need future steps to resolve that conflict?
Sure, I'll try my best. The WIA policy actually is not a GPA policy. The guidance is that students pass three out of four classes, four out of five classes, five out of six. It's basically, they can fail one class in their schedule, but they have to be passing the remaining classes. For our particular board policy, we have a GPA requirement, not a number of classes passed. So there is a discrepancy between the two. Technically, you can be passing a class with a D grade. If you were to take that extreme of passing three out of four, four out of five, DDD and failing one class, you could actually have less than a 1.0. So what we're looking at is the consideration of that ability to waive that particular requirement. It doesn't mean that every student who applies or wants to or has a GPA below 2.0 is going to be waived and then allowed to participate in sports. It's just you would look at each situation as it arose and make a determination. So that's the discrepancy between the two policies.
So do we need to fix that in this policy, or is the conflict okay? I think that's a, it's a policy question, like, does it, does it matter to us that their standard is different than ours? Because our standard, from what I'm hearing, is a little bit higher, essentially, that requiring a 2.0 is a higher standard than passing and failing.
The answer to that?
That's correct. Yes, we do have a higher standard than what the WIA standard is.
Does it need to be incorporated in the policy, or by incorporating it in the procedure and attached to this intro item, you'll see the red lines or the track changes? And I appreciate those track changes being included so that it's really wonderfully transparent.
Right.
Director Pinkham, and then Director DeWolf.
Yeah, so this rang a bell about, actually, what we discussed in one of the things in Audit and Finance Quarter Report yesterday about online credit and possibly moving from grading online credit to going to pass/fail. So then how may that then impact this? If now students don't get grades for online classes or getting to pass/fail, then it's not going to impact their GPA, they could still remain ineligible. Would that then be a waiver that we'd probably see about going for that it talks about?
I think, again, each situation you'd have to take a look at, and to Director Harris's point and Director Mack, I think if you have those items outlined in a procedure rather than the policy, the policy would give you the broader range of what you're considering. The procedure would get into the actual, what are you doing, the machinations to take a look at what that discrepancy might look like. To Director Pinkham's question, yes, I mean, in the pass/fail situation, it could have an impact on your particular GPA, which is why you would want to maybe take a look at this waiver piece because you could have, you know, a pass, pass, and then only a few letter grades that are giving you a GPA that might be lower than what you're looking at for the 2.0, but still be passing something. So that's where you'd want to take a look at each one of these. But, you know, with future classes, I think that's one we'd have to continue to take a look at and see how that develops for our students.
Director DeWolf, please.
Thank you, President Harris. I just was looking at the first page of the policy, and I think to Director Mack's question, the second paragraph states, "The board shall require that all schools are participating in the WIA-approved activities, follow the rules and regulations established by the WA, and," I think this is the part that answers it, "is the board retains the right to establish eligibility standards that meet or exceed the rules and regulations of the WIA." So I think it's kind of within our purview, we do have that kind of inconsistency that that's kind of just one of our rights here in this policy.
Seeing no other comments, questions, concerns, I have a few. I could not endorse Director Gary's position more heartily. We talk an awful lot about equity in this building and throughout our schools, and that's not equity. I would very much like to see a fiscal note attached to incorporating unified. And I'd also like to take it one step further. Ultimate is a club sport. Lacrosse is a club sport. Some of these club sports are available to our students that wouldn't be superstars on the basketball team or the football team or haven't attended camps since they were four or five years old. And it gives them a richness of participation. And frankly, some of them are very different kinds of kids. And I thought that in this district, we celebrate all kinds of students. So I have difficulty watching us walk our talk. So I'd like, I'd like some fiscal notes attached to what it would cost. And during the operations meeting, we, some of us adjourned into the boardroom and argued up a storm and talked about this, and thank you to our athletic director, McCurdy, who absolutely agrees, but he looks at me and he said, "Yo, Leslie, where's the money?" Well, I don't even know how much money that is. I'd like to know. I'd like to know how much money that is. And I'd like to know a plan for attaining that goal, should God forbid, McCleary not be fake news. In any event, thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned at 6:45.
Thank you.